Call the meeting to order. Let's all stand and say we play a plea. I plead a plea just through the light of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
She might be saying where she's at.
Which is loving. Everybody read the agenda?
Yeah, I'm making motion with you.
All seconded. All in favor? All right. Fourth Adams. Kennedy, candidate, chance to speak. Who wants to be first?
I just wanted to announce that the election will take place Tuesday, November 17th, 2017, at Nelson City Hall from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Advanced voting has already started on Monday, October 16th, and it will run through Friday, November 3rd, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Pickens County Board of Elections and Registration Office. Remember that all registered voters in the city of Nelson and wish to participate in this election must vote here at the City Hall on November 7th, unless they vote in advance. This is true for both Pickens and Cherokee County sides of the city. So, in other words, Pickens County residents can vote on everything right here. Cherokee County residents will have to vote on the Splot and other matters at the polling place, which I think is a church up the street, and then here for the local election. So, included with this is a list of the candidates, as well as the seat that they are qualified for. This same list can be found on the marble counter by the agendas out there in front of City Hall. We will allow each candidate a chance to speak and then answer some questions. We expect civility and respect at all times.
All right, who wants to go first?
A little bit about myself, I'm Sylvia Green. I am a resident of Nelson. I've been here for 22 years. I've raised my children here. I have two kids, a son and a daughter. My daughter is a graduate of Kennesaw State. Two degrees, my son proud of her. She currently is working at a law firm in Marietta. My son works and lives in Canton, and he is a current student of Kennesaw. I'm a successful businesswoman with 20 years-plus years in telecom as an operations manager for the southeast. A lot of people say, hey, why do you want to, why do you want to, you know, run for mayor for Nelson? I'd like to give back to my community. I have no politic experience. So, you know, I'm willing to learn. Take any training that you have. I'm a quick study. My successfulness in business shows that. I moved up very quickly and continue to move up. So, I do yearly budgeting, which I think is a plus for this position. I manage anywhere from eight to 10 area managers for the state of Georgia and 85-plus contractors and subcontractors. I work for major vendors. I've watched a lot of the minutes on TV for Nelson. People ask, you know, why do you want to be, why do you want to do this job? And I'd like to bring a fresh perspective to the community. I'd like to bring some unity to this community and draw us back together as a community. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I'm good.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Lamar Teller from Nelson. One 005 Warley Drive. And I've stood this podium a lot of times, what I call trying to give back to the community with my observations and the way I feel that we can do things better to serve the community. I am retired after 33 years with the Federal Aviation Administration. I worked in electronics field and had a lot of supervisory experience and later on the last 15 years as a manager over from 25 to 100. I think the highest was around 150 people. So, I had the opportunity to be involved in a lot of planning, budgeting, personnel issues. And I would like to become a member of the council because it's about time to be able to vote. I've served on the Planning Commission for 10 years in support of the council. And I think we had a real good Planning Commission during the years 2002 through 2012, until the Planning Commission was abolished by the council. During that time, we were able, through the efforts of a lot of people, to get $250,000 to do the park expansion, as you said today, with the kitty park and the associated items over there. Now, I feel like I could bring to the council something that we've been a little short of. It appears to me is planning skills and program management skills. That means when you have funds to do a project, then you have to plan out your project to the minute details that you feel you need. And then, once the council agrees on what the project's going to be, then it has to be a program to accomplish that particular goals of that project. And I think we've, over the last year, several years actually, but it's been really pretty slack this past year, our accomplishments. And a lot of the reasons for that is we never did even get started. We didn't do any plans. And so, therefore, now we're a happy year into 2018. And to my knowledge, we still really haven't started on any of the new projects that we have on our capital program. We are working on a part of a drainage problem up on Cherokee Avenue. I don't know the status, but that was in the planning stages the last I remember seeing before the council. And we have to do better, to follow up on these projects. Not just projects, but everything that comes before the council. We have not a good track record over many years of following through on a lot of items. We get started and things just kind of go into the black hole. One of particular interests this past year was that my opponent and the council in general was looking into getting an intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County to benefit the city by helping us with our planning and zoning code enforcement. Many of the paperwork items said we just don't really have the staff and the expertise to do a good job on it. And that had a short life. And then it went somewhere. But it hasn't been on the table, I don't think, for the past six months. Hasn't even been discussed. And that's kind of the problem I see with our projects, like our Splot money, which we have. Ooh, the Splot money. Last count, I had over $650,000 sitting in the bank. And we have parking for the park we need to be doing. We have some paving projects we need to be doing. And if you look at the capital plan, many of these items have not even been got beyond just plugging a number into the budget. All it is, at this point, is a number. And I want to be able to place a lot more emphasis on reporting where we are. Like, I would suggest, like, every month, that we have a quick run-through. If we only have six projects, it wouldn't take that long to get a status of where we are on each of the projects and what is the holdup, if there is a holdup. As I said, right now, our holdup seems to be, we just can't find the time to get started. So, I would look forward to working with the council. And I've worked with the council now for over 18 years. Twelve of those is Planning Commission chair. And then I've continued to come to meetings ever since 2002. And I have a lot of experience. I've been through at least five or six different mayors. And I know how mayors work. And I've been, I've worked with a number of council people. And I've seen go-getters and I've seen not-so-go-getters. But that's what it's all about, is everybody can bring something to the table. So, that would be what I would like to emphasize if I'm a member of the council, is to work with each and every member of the council, each one of the people that are residents of the city that have to benefit their lives. So, I welcome your vote. So, I'm looking forward to November 7th and see who the new players are going to be. Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions?
If not, next.
You're smiling, I know you miss my elbow.
Whispers.
My name is Mike Hadlon. I'm the set of 24 Pickens Street. I'm a candidate for the mayor position. I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself and what it is that I think I bring to the mayor opposition that sets me apart. Regarding myself, a little history. I'm a U.S. Navy veteran. Had a 35-year career in public administration, all of which was at the senior management level. Now retired, I retired for 14 years. I lived with my wife in Nelson. We lived here for about nine years. Going on 10. Some people know about this, others of you don't. I'm a volunteer in the community in picking up litter along the roads. A lot of people who see me, everyone see me, but I actually have been doing it for about five years now. Actually, longer than that, I started counting for the last five years. And the grand total, and I'm now the record holder of, is 808 bags of litter that I have picked up out of this small stretch of road in the city of Nelson. That is a lot of trash. Other significant thing that you also know, because I don't get to boast about it too much, here's an opportunity. I am a three-time USA Track and Field National Champion, right out of Nelson here. So, that's my objective, to bring notoriety and identity to Nelson. So, there you have it. So, what do I bring to the position? Excuse me. Three things. First, I think, is my professional academic education. I have two master's degrees. I don't know what your daughter has, but I'm going to try to go with two. Actually have a third one, but I'm not going to talk about it. Public administration and urban planning, which are uniquely aimed at a mayor, kind of a position, of doing work in administrative role for a city. I think my academic credentials pretty much far exceed anything that we have had in the city or historically or current. Number two is I have a lot of direct, inside experience in the city of Nelson. Previously served as a Nelson mayor. Previously served as a Nelson City councilperson. And previously served as a Nelson Planning Commissioner under the chair of the commission's watch. What's good about that is that I really have a very broad perspective, from top down to Planning Commission at the bottom, the council in between. And I really have a history. I pretty much understand the issues in Nelson intimately, in some ways, unfortunately. And I don't have a big learning curve in front of me. I'm ready to go if elected. Third issue, what I bring, is a national perspective. And by that, I mean the experience I've had as a professional municipal management as a result of my 30-year career throughout the country in several cities. I've really learned a lot about what other cities do to solve problems, how they've gone about addressing the issues. And that really has given me a very broad exposure beyond just Nelson, to be able to give some direction and some guidance to how we solve problems in the community. I have one more thing in my list. Probably is the more important thing is I really care about Nelson. I have my I love badge on. If elected, I'm going to try to get badges for all of the council and our attorney and our clerk, so that everyone can see us with meetings and we have some pride and identity with the community. But I do really care. That's why I'm out picking up litter. Don't get paid for that. I don't get any recognition for it either. Nobody cares that I have 108 bags. But I also think I can really make a difference. And that's really my interest. In summary, I think I have some excellent credentials. I have an excellent background. And I appreciate your consideration and your vote coming time for elections. Are there any questions? I'd like to add that, yes.
You said you were mayor before.
Yeah.
How long were you mayor for Nelson?
I'm not sure. Half a year? Year? Not a year. I don't know.
Is there a reason you didn't finish the term?
Yeah. There was, at the time, I disagreed as to whether there was a strong mayor or a weak mayor. And what was the power and authority of the mayor. And that was a significant issue at the time. I'd like to add, if I can, that I really concur with the theme that Lamar had. One of the themes he suggested, which was, we have a lot of money in the bank and it's just sitting there. And there is a lot of projects. We've got a park that hasn't done, has been closed for three years now, going on four years that we haven't finished. We got roads. We've got sewer systems or stormwater systems that need to be repaired, infrastructure. And we have a capital improvement program. The council's approved the projects. And we just have not taken the leadership and the initiative to get some things done. If were I elected, I would be high on my list that we begin to demonstrate accomplishments and build the improvements that the community needs and wants. I think we can do better than what we're doing. I think we can do a lot better than we're doing. Well, thank you for that question, Mike. That was a good answer. Thank you for that.
All right, that brings the unfinished business. Maybe you'll take off of that one.
All right, discuss the results of the Marble Festival tours. The Marble Festival and tours took place on October 7th through the 8th. A lot of great changes were made, and the feedback was terrific despite the rain and high winds that swept through on Sunday. We had record-breaking participation in the tours on Saturday. So many people signed up that they had to add an extra bus. People loved the museum and many commented on how they intend to come back at some point when they can take their time to see everything. The photos of the history of Nelson in the front of City Hall were also a huge hit. The two porta-potties were a welcome gift. They were paid for by the Chamber of Commerce, so they came at no cost to the city. No more long lines, which led to more time to be able to see the museum, which was one of the biggest complaints in the years passed from people that had taken the tours. A special thanks to Ms. Sue Cochran for her help during the tours, as well as the Creep Few JROTC cadets that came in uniform to help out. Those on the tours were delighted to see the young people dressed up respectful and willing to help. I also want to mention that there are many who attend the tours yearly. And a lot of them, as well as newcomers, were full of compliments on how wonderful our little city looked. Several said that they could not remember the last time that the city looked this good. And make sure to pass these compliments on to Mr. Fawcett, who works so hard to get everything ready. Overall, I can say that this year's Marble Festival tours were a huge success. Many take for granted that we have a museum here, but they shouldn't because it's a treasure that helps keep our Marble history alive. Any questions?
All right, our next Adams is the dumpster queen.
All right. Citywide dumpster days are upon us. October 21st and the 22nd. On the 28th and the 29th, we will provide dumpsters for residents of the city to help clean up. Included with this is the information sheet I sent out with every trash bill. And there are extras on the marble counter in front by the agendas. On this is a list of items that cannot go in the dumpster. We will be charged extra and they can refuse service if it becomes a reoccurring problem. Just a quick thing, it is antifreeze, batteries, oil, paint, refrigerator freon, tires, mattresses, and dead bodies. Figured I'd throw that in because the dumpster lady did. In order to avoid overflow like the last time, we'll be blocking off the lot once the dumpster is full. We use the security cameras that face that lot to track those that choose to abuse the program. I am looking for volunteers to help man the dumpster since I'm only one person and cannot be there the entire time. Mr. Fawcett is also volunteering. All it requires is making sure that people are not dumping anything they're not supposed to and making sure we are loading the dumpster from, it should have said from back to front, in order to maximize space. Let me know if you or anyone that you know is willing to help. This would also be a great chance for candidates to meet the people that will vote for them in the upcoming election. Hint, hint. I'm excited that the city is able to offer this service to its residents. Last time in April, we got rid of over 14 tons of trash out of the city. So, and the residents were just grateful because a lot of them don't have a truck or a means to go to the dump or to pay someone to come remove it out of their yard. And so, they've been grateful for the program. So, it's been a good success.
We had David's log here for a couple of days. What time is it going to start, Saturday?
I was going to start like 8:00 in the morning. That way, people weren't making a lot of noise, you know, for those that are still sleeping and whatever. Now, Ricky's going to help too, but Sundays he has church stuff, so.
I'll go in and bring her a biscuit.
See, you want to take the tractor out there on the cobweb and block that?
I think it's easier to use the truck. It's easier to block. It'll be more easier to block it with the truck than the cobweb.
That brings us to new business. Discuss the traffic areas on Hillside Street and Pickens Street across from the church.
Okay. I've recently received some input from citizens concerning the area where Hillside Street and Pickens Street cross by the church. There was a three-way stop there at one point, which was removed and replaced with crosswalks. In response to these concerns, I've taken it upon myself to set up shop and observe the area and its traffic patterns. Particularly on Sundays, but other times as well, this area is hazardous for those trying to enter Pickens Street from Hillside Street. Included with this are two maps. The area in the black circle is where I'm referring to. Sorry they're not better. I worked with what I could find online. But you get the idea from these maps. My first suggestion is that we mark that side of Hillside. The side that is, you know, this side here that's circled, which is the direction entering, going onto Pickens Street, because that is a one-way street. The problem is, is there's only one small sign there that says "one way" or "wrong way," and it's white. What I want to do is mark that clearly, like we did Church Street, with the two signs on either side that say "wrong way, do not enter." That seems to be very effective. So, the one sign that we have is there, is faded and bad shape. So, what I want to do is, like I said, do exactly what we did on Church Street, which clearly mark it, and that way we don't have any issues. Because if somebody comes flying down there the wrong way, there's really nowhere for the other person to go that's coming in the right direction. My second suggestion is that we consider reinstating the three-way stop at that intersection. This will keep people safe from all perspectives, which is a responsibility that the city has to its residents. We do not have enough council members present to vote, but I just wanted to bring it up for discussion and see if I should add it to the future agenda for a vote. I also wanted to make note that I had some gentleman, a gentleman from GDOT. And I spoke, and he had spoke to several other people that work at GDOT about the situation. And they agreed that we should probably reinstate that. They stated that we were out there for about four hours, just, you know, at a point in time, just kind of observing the traffic there and how it's hard to creep up to see to go to Pickens Street either way. And they recommended that we consider putting, that would be their advice, as well as the signs, to clearly mark that. And I also had them go with me and kind of look at the streets in the city and get recommendations on a bunch of that stuff, which I'll bring up at another meeting. But I wanted a professional perspective on where we stand with our roads and streets, where we should start, that kind of thing, so.
All right, next one is.
Did you all want me to go ahead and add that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because GDOT come through, you know. When I was on council board, we just had one at the end of Lew Ridge. And somehow, the same feller that works for GDOT got involved. And then, next thing you know, they was back up there.
Yeah, I mean, it really does help in make things, you know, with these small roads and things like that.
Even though it's one-way, nobody pays any attention.
Exactly, exactly.
All right, we go to B. It's a discussed combined in the meeting and the work session Thursday for November 16th.
Okay, the normal.
Due to the election.
Yeah, the normal monthly council meeting is scheduled for Monday, November 6th, but City Hall will already be set up for voting in the November 7th election, leaving no room for a meeting. The work session is scheduled for November 16th. Rather than have a meeting on Monday, the 13th, and do a work session three days later, I thought it would make sense just to combine the two and make the meeting Thursday, November 16th. Since we do not have enough council present for a vote, I'd just like a recommendation so that I can note the date change and prepare accordingly. I spoke with Ms. Reel before she left to go out of town, and she said she had no problem with the date change, it made sense to do that.
That's by the way.
That's by the way.
Okay, so then we'll go ahead, and the November meeting will combine the meeting and the work session, and it will take place on Thursday, November 16th.
All right, that brings us to public appearance. Anybody want to talk? You want to vote adjourned?
Yeah, I might motion adjourned.
I'll say it, on paper.